Pretty soon, yep.
Just take a second.
Good evening. We'll call to order the meeting of the City Commission for February 5, 2018. First on our agenda would be roll call.
Mayor Hades?
Present.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
All right, thank you. Next would be invocation from Major Johnson of the Salvation Army. Could you lead us in invocation?
Yes. Thank you, Father, for the opportunity we have to, for these people to serve on the board and help meet the needs of our citizens. May they make good decisions that will be beneficial to all the people, be with their families, and bless them today. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Moving on, next on our agenda would be personal appearances. We have reports from the Police Department and the Fire Department. Is there anybody from the Police Department? Your item six and fire is number seven.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. I was told to keep this at ten minutes. I don't know if that's possible, but that's why we sent you the crime stats in advance. So I've got several slides, but I'm gonna try to buzz them, buzz through them really quick, so. Get this thing good. Okay. Just remind you our department motto, the department motto, community safety, partners in service, stays the essential purpose of the El Dorado Police Department. The department protects the rights of all persons within its jurisdiction to be free from criminal attack, to be secure in their possessions, and live in peace. A department commitment, the El Dorado Police Department is committed to providing a safe, livable community with a high quality of life by maintaining order, protecting persons and property with equal and consistent enforcement of the law. I've got this little sign up by our time clock. I think it's a kind of a good indication of our mantra we try to live by. Your job gives you authority, but your behavior gives you respect. I'm just gonna buzz through these really quick unless you have any questions. Overall, the 2017 crime stats went down in almost every area, other than we had an uptick in robbery. Went from two robbery cases in '16 to seven in '17. I can tell you four of those seven, we've cleared and closed and either made arrests or sent them to the prosecutors. Two of the cases, we have an idea who did it, but we just don't have enough evidence, enough to charge them, so, but we've had a pretty good luck solving those. Fraud went up seventeen percent, but, I mean, those numbers are all relative. You know, it was like three more cases than it was in '16. And the pornography case, you see, we went from, I think, two to three, so, I mean, it went up technically by fifty percent. Interestingly enough, at the Emergency Responder Appreciation Dinner they had Saturday night at the community building, KBI Director Kirk Thompson was the speaker. He said crime stats in Kansas are going up almost statewide, but for some reason in Butler County they're staying down. Don't quite know why. His theory was because we've got pretty good communication between the police, our community members, and the sheriff's office, and those community members out in the county, so, it's good news for us. Hopefully it stays that way. Traffic accident data, I don't think I put that in your stuff. No fatality accidents, hit and runs were down by twelve percent, injury accidents were down by thirteen percent, non-injury accidents were down by five percent. Overall, in 2017, the department investigated 2,260 cases, which is a decrease of 357 cases as compared to 2016. Total number of incidents for the El Dorado Police Department 2017, which includes cases, calls for service, traffic stops, et cetera, is 14,024. NTAs and warrants, 3,200 notices appear in court with 3,900 charges were issued by officers in 2017. Three hundred and seventy-nine warrants were issued by the El Dorado Municipal Court, and officers served 395 warrants in 2017. Talk about community activities, we're really involved in the community. This is National Night Out that we had in August of '17. Had a pretty good crowd there, very nice evening. They all enjoyed hamburgers and hot dogs and real good. We've had a pretty good turnout last three years with the community-wide National Night Out, so I anticipate we'll do it again this year. Career Day at Lincoln School, community activities, Career Day at the Middle School. That's then Detective Murphy giving a talk at the United Way luncheon. Thanksgiving lunch with the kiddos at Skelly School. We do try to do a drug take-back at least once a year. That's sponsored by the DEA where you set up a booth and people can bring in their expired Got some good drivers, coffee and doughnut certificates from Turner's Doughnuts. We participated in the 2017 Law Enforcement Parade in Wichita, and we are scheduled to attend that again this year, and I think that was in April. I believe this was in your packet, it shows the code enforcement complaints that Sarah has dealt with in '17. You can see she does a little bit of everything. Total complaints was 1,058, so she keeps pretty busy. Couple pictures of some of the blighted properties she dealt with in '17. Lending a Helping Hand, that's Officer Marshall. He's helping a lost kid find his way home. That picture was put on our Facebook page, and that thing got a lot of views. I don't remember the number, but it was a ton, in the thousands, so, good stuff. That's Officer Tomat and Officer Marshall changing a flat tire for a lady. That's Officer Yumig fixing a bike. I think this kid's chain popped off, and Officer Yumig saw it and stopped to fix it. 2016, we were actually presented this in 2017, but the 2016 AAA Platinum Award for Community Traffic Safety, that is the highest award that AAA gives out. We're one of the few in the state of Kansas to receive that. That has to do with all of our STEP campaigns we do, traffic enforcement, a lot of things go into that. The truck inspections that Thompson does all go in to get this award, so, it's good stuff. We had a number of lifesaving awards we gave out last year, too, which is always a good thing when we can save somebody's life. Continuing education and training, this is a Krav Maga class, this is defensive tactics. It's actually Chad Young's gonna be giving this tomorrow and Thursday again for this This is a couple of pictures from the old Mike Four Building that was tore down. They let us go in there and do some training before they tore that down, so that was actually active shooter training we participated in. Continuing education and training, we have several certified instructors, so allows us to certify our officers yearly without, you know, sending them other places. We have two police firearms instructors, two taser instructors, an Asmex Spaniel Bolton instructor, one Krav Maga Defensive Tactics instructor, one traffic Doppler radar and LiDAR instructor, and some specialized certifications. We've got one police polygraph examiner, a commercial truck inspector, and a certified drug K-9 handler. Recruitment, I want to talk about this. I believe Kinder was asking at the work session if we had anybody, you know, promoting our department. I can tell you that we've been doing a lot of that the last four or five months. I gave you all a couple pamphlets that we had developed earlier this year and have been handing out. We currently have job openings posted at over 100 colleges in the Midwest. Our recruitment visits have been conducted at Bethany College, at Pittsburgh State. There's a visit at Kansas Westland scheduled. There's a virtual job fair through Fort Hayes State scheduled. We're scheduled to be at a Wichita State Job Fair, and a Highway 54 Job Fair scheduled through Friends and Newman Universities. And we've done a recruitment visit at McConnell Air Force Base, and Lieutenant Maggie Schreiber and Ken Tomat were at Fort Riley today, all day, doing some recruitment stuff. So we're doing everything we can think of to get our name out there and get recognized in the area, and we're in the infancy stages of this, so we're trying to develop a plan to see how this is working, so as we get applicants coming in for testing, we're asking, "Where did you hear about us?", so we'll know which avenue's working the best. We've got quite a Facebook following. We're up to 4,994 likes. We've been real aggressive with our Facebook page probably about the last two years. We put a lot of stuff on there, and we get a lot of reactions. Like I said, that picture of Officer Marshall helping that little kid got a whole bunch of views, and I think the biggest view that we've got, and I was gonna put that photo in here, we were chasing a felon on a foot chase in a neighborhood, and he was cutting through backyards while he jumps in a fence, and this dog named Brody kind of slowed him down for us. Didn't bite him, but grabbed a hold of the suspect's sweats, it kind of slowed him down. We caught him, and we put a picture of Brody up on the Facebook page, and it was like 60,000 views. It was shared hundreds of times, so follow us on Facebook, @ElDoradoKansasPoliceDepartment. And we've also delved into the Twitter about the last year. We've currently got 1,988 followers. I'm not much, I've got it on my phone, I look at the stuff. I haven't physically tweeted yet, I don't think, probably because I don't know how to do it, but I do look at the stuff on there, but what we're learning now is the young folks, that's where they're getting all their information, Twitter and Facebook. They don't watch the news like a lot of us do, so. And I stand for any questions, if you all have any.
Chief, on these Group A, Group B offenses, are those numbers, are those reported, or those arrests?
Those were reported to us. And the Group A and Group B offenses, that's what we submit to the KBI and the FBI. Those are the ones that are required to be reported by the FBI, and they do their annual stats, and I think the sixteen stats just came out the other day. I got an email from an organization that ranks safest cities in states, and I got the congratulation email that we ranked, I think, 13th safest in Kansas. Keep in mind, that's 2016 stats, and we did have a homicide in 2016, so, we didn't in '17, so hopefully our ranking will go up. On the flip side of that, there was another organization that had the most dangerous cities in Kansas, and I think they ranked 42, and we ranked like 24, 27. Wichita was number one, obviously, the most dangerous, so, anyway, we're, I mean, we're pretty happy with those stats, and I'm gonna try to get them up on the most safest, not getting them up on the most dangerous, but it was funny, those two kind of came out simultaneously, so, anyway, those are the stats that we report to the state and the FBI.
Yeah, I think I got that same email about safest city.
Well, I just want to say the stats are very, very optimistic, especially for the stuff that we're trying to do up here. This is, you know, this is, the number's going down, and, I mean, there's only a couple, and there's drastic number changes within some of the stuff that you really want to see, the drug offenses, the criminal damage, you know, larceny and theft, all those are big numbers going down, so kudos to you, chief.
Well, thanks. I don't think it's just us. I think there's a lot of factors, and has to do with the good prosecution of cases, you know, with the municipal court, and there's a lot of factors involved, but I appreciate it.
But that's, you're the start of it. You're the start of the process, and that's...
We have a bunch of good people, they stay busy, so. Anything else? Thank you. Thanks for your support.
You bet. Thank you. Chief.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. First, I'd like to start by saying that '17 was a transitional year at best for the Fire Department, but we still managed to improve our statistics, so I'd like to start with our response times. Our average response times within the city were five minutes and 28 seconds. Within the county, our response districts in the county were eight minutes and 42 seconds, and our response to mutual aid, surrounding departments that called for help, were 11 minutes and 14 seconds. This is an average response of four personnel, which is two personnel from each station. You can see in the stat, the green is a 17, so you see that we have improved in our response times in '17 over '16 and '15. This is a stat that I was impressed by. We're really working on trying to improve recording our data and our statistics, so we did a lot better recording property values. Anytime we're paged to a call, we try to, normally we pull it up on the county appraisal site, and we try to assess what that property value's worth as a whole. From there, we estimate what the damage from fire occurred to that property, and that would be the resulting total loss in that figure. And the property value, you see, nearing 52 million there is the value of the property undamaged by the appraisal site. So you can see that's about one percent of the total property value that was lost in We also contract with the El Dorado Township, Prospect Township, and the county for fire service and hazmat service. This allows us to generate some funds that are then put into the general fund, and you can see that we accrued about 616,000 that was able to go to the general fund. We also do a lot of in-house maintenance. I've got some great guys that do this maintenance, and they save the city a ton of money by being able to do this. We had over 379 hours of maintenance that was completed, and we estimate that based on a shop rate, that saved the city about $18,000 in labor cost. Our responses by district, we had 1,382 total alarms. These are anything that generates an incident report. Station One's district had 677 alarms. Station Two's district had 478. El Dorado Township, there was 108 alarms. Prospect Township had 72, and we responded to mutual aid 47 times. Of those 1,382 calls, we had 157 fires. These would be vehicle fires, house fires, grass fires, anything that's basically on fire. Our next stat was medical response, our first response, and rescue that we provide, and we had 759 of those. You can see that's by large is a bulk of what type of call we respond to. We responded to 52 hazardous material calls, 140 calls for service. We had 198 good intent calls, 65 false alarms, and then 11 alarms that aren't classified in that group.
What is a good intent call?
Somebody sees steam, calls it in as smoke. We respond, and we find out that it's steam and not smoke, or they see a car alongside the road and is pushing a lot of steam out because it busted a radiator hose, they think it's on fire, we'll respond out there, or somebody's control burning, and we respond and find it is still under control. Those are good intent calls. We conducted 758 inspections. Of those, we try to get into every business within El Dorado at least once a year and do a fire prevention inspection. That also includes daycares and any follow-up that we have to do. We tested 678 hydrants within the city. We go out, we flow test these. It allows them, us, to get a reading on how much water we can get from those. Fire hydrants are color-coded, so, like the blue cap you see here, that's one of the best hydrants that we have. Last year, we also were evaluated by ISO, and we received very high points for our water supply system, so. We conducted public education. This is one of my guys' favorite parts. They go out, and we participate in Project 2020. In '17, it was at the middle school. This year, we're at the high school. We also have a class at Skelly and Jefferson Schools. Master Firefighter Caleb Carson's continuing the junior firefighter program. He goes to all the fourth grade classes in El Dorado and teaches them about fire safety. We do multiple fire extinguisher trainings, places like Bark Solvents, BG Chemicals, some of the hotels. We do it for like the resident advisors at the college, so we do quite extensive fire extinguisher training in the community. Along those lines of fire prevention week, we went out and talked to the preschool and daycare at First Baptist Church, and then we had assemblies at all the elementary schools, Grandview, Skelly, Jefferson, Oil Hill, Lincoln. We continue our student-resident program, our partnership with the college that allows the students to come in. They respond alongside with the firefighters, they train alongside our firefighters, and helps them gain some experience, while after we get them trained to a certain level, we can use them very similarly to a volunteer firefighter, so it helps our manpower once we get them trained to a certain level. In 2017, we had 12,935 total man-hours of training. Those came from a total of 2,507 training classes. Some examples of these would be the Kansas State Firefighters Association Conference. We've hosted many in-house KU or Kansas Fire Rescue Training Service, Training Classes here within El Dorado. We had members attend the Kansas Chapter of the International Association of Arson Investigator Conference, and we had several members in cooperation with the refinery, they took us to Texas A&amp;M to do some industrial firefighting. Some of the major events, again, we get out in the community, and we like to be in the community. We participated in the MDA boot drive. The community was very receptive, and they stepped forward and helped us out a lot this year, in 2017. We participated in the Elks Flag Day, the El Dorado Fall Festival, OK Kids Camp. One of my guys' favorite was trick-or-treat down the street this year. YMCA Kids Camp. We went over to Butler County 4-H Fair, and we're a big hit over there. The kids like to play in the fire hose in the heat of the summer, so. We had several members go and participate in the 9/11 Memorial Stair climb. We had people stand by for the Lantern Festival out at the lake. We allowed the Butler County Animal Rescue Team to do a fundraiser out at Station Two, and our guys oftentimes help with that. We participated in, I think, two of the elementary schools' Fun Day activities. We had personnel that were involved with the Damn Music Festival, and we participated in Frontier Day Parade, the Homecoming Parade, the Veterans Day Parade, and the Christmas I would open it up for any questions you might have.
Note in your first slide, you had a pretty dramatic difference in your time, average time of response from '16 to '17. Is there any indicators online? Looked like it was pretty close to '15, '16 was up high, and '17 was...
'16, again, it kind of depends on where we're responding.
Yeah.
The Tell-Tale City, we should have pretty common responses in that, and I think we went from...
Oh, I see it's mutual aid. I was down...
Yeah. Mutual aid, that might have been a call to Andover that we didn't have in '17 that we might have had in '16, or Douglas or something like that, so.
I see, yeah. It's better context then. Thanks.
Chief, is it, can you go another slide? You're talking about the different, no, I'm sorry, the one that has the different kind of alarms?
Okay. This one?
Yeah. And this is just me speaking out of ignorance, but is it traditional law? I just always wondered why they always rolled a fire truck to medical.
We originally got started, it wasn't always that we had two ambulances stationed here in El Dorado. Sometimes, and we still have occasions where we're waiting on an ambulance from Augusta or Andover, or, it doesn't happen as often as it used to, but we got started when we had to wait for an ambulance from Andover one time, and there was an extensive response time for that ambulance. So we had trained personnel, and they asked us why we weren't responding. Most fire departments have adapted to respond to medical calls now, but like Wichita was a big one that was doing it at the time. And it allows us to get in and preliminarily start patient care until the ambulance can get there, arrive on scene, and...
Okay. I would just, I always wondered that, and I just, just curious.
For the east end of town, by us having a station on this side, normally we can respond faster and arrive sooner than the ambulance can on the east and north ends of town, but...
Okay. And answering my question, thank you.
Chief, we're still operating under the 2006 IBC. Is there any in fire code as well? Is that correct? Is there any conversations about, or any changes that you anticipate coming with fire prevention codes?
I'm really, there's been some discussion at the state level with the state fire marshal of going to, I believe, the 2012 code. We're kind of waiting and watching to see what they do, so we're not trying to enforce a different code than the state is at that level, so...
Okay. Anything supplementary that the city, that your department's looking at that would be outside of what those codes are?
I don't believe so at this time.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. And your consent agenda would be minutes and board appointments. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda as presented to be approved.
Second. Okay. It's been moved to second, and for the consent agenda, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Old business, none, new business would be, first thing on our agenda would be the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Agreement Amendment. It's not full.
Yes, it is.
Someone here to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
KDHE sent us an amendment, or an addendum to the current Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund Agreement for project number 392. This was done, this actual loan financed several El Dorado sewer improvements throughout the community at a cost of $1.29 million. That was the amount, the loan amount, the principal amount that was approved from KDHE, but the project actually came in less than what was originally anticipated, and so KDHE sent the city an addendum to our current load agreement to reduce the principal amount to $1,058,008, so reduces it by nearly $240,000. by nearly two hundred forty thousand dollars. Um, and so that means that we have a new amortization schedule, which is what the addendum incorporates as part of that. So, that means we'll be paying less in interest on a lower principal amount over the life of that loan. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Basically, amending a loan? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to direct the mayor to sign the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Agreement Amendment to KDHE loan C-two-zero-one-nine-eight-seven-zero-one.
I'll second it.
Okay, so moved to second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next would be the roll-off truck bids.
Mayor, Commission, this is a replacement for the sanitation department. Uh, bids were sent out to two companies, uh, that provide these types of vehicles. Uh, we received back one bid, uh, from Key Equipment. Anytime we only receive one back, I was, want to know why. Um, the company, the second company that we had sent to had some major changes in their organization, and they did not bid any vehicles during that period of time. They, they had, they felt that their reorganization, their restructuring was more important, and so they did not, they did not bid for, for that reason, so. Um, we do preliminary budgetary numbers, uh, early on or end of the year prior to our next budget cycle when we have a vehicle due. So, this one, um, we gathered, uh, budgetary numbers for eighteen's budget, mid-seventeen, um, so we'd know to make sure that we were in the ballpark for what we were putting in budget for this vehicle, and, and this number lined right up, uh, with where we needed to be. So, they were within five or seven hundred dollars of what they told us, uh, the prior year where they would be. So, uh, I feel like this is a good bid. Um, it's a good piece of equipment. It's currently replacing a two thousand and seven, I don't know if I have that with me or not, but it's a two thousand and seven, and it has eleven thousand hours on it, which is a lot of hours, um, at an average of sixty-one, uh, miles per hour. That's a little over half a million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand miles on that vehicle, so. Um, we've well gotten our use out of it. It will be, um, a backup vehicle for us. Um, earlier this year, we had a, uh, some repair work done to it. Um, left us, uh, stepping and fetching a little bit for a vehicle to, to do the work that we do with that. Fortunately for us, our relationship with Butler County is good enough. They were nice enough to let us borrow their truck so that we could continue servicing our customers, and so by having this one in reserve capacity, um, not only will it allow us to have a backup, but during those times like right now when I have a roll-off driver that's working eight, nine hours a day to keep up, I could throw another guy in to help him out to reduce that overtime, uh, in that department a little bit. So, all in all, I think this is a good bid. Um, we've had very good luck with this company being responsive to service needs, um, and anything else, so.
Um, if I read this right, it's going to be a CNG?
It is, that's correct. Dedicated CNG, which will make...
It's not a dual fuel, just a CNG?
Yes, it's dedicated. So, there, it's, uh, that will be, we only have one more vehicle, uh, left to replace. Hypothetically, that's next year. Uh, we may skip a year, um, as it is, uh, but, uh, that will be all of our sanitation vehicles, uh, on natural gas. Those are the vehicles that generally go slow and burn lots of fuel, so. Um, we've taken our fuel budget in that department from four or five years ago being sixty, seventy thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars, down to, I think we were just a little over twenty thousand last year. So, big savings, big difference, a lot cleaner burning, less carbon footprint.
Yeah.
Great savings to our, another efficiency in that department, so.
Very good.
I mean, I just, to be honest, the one bid kind of bothers me a little bit. There's only two people that build this truck?
No, there's more. Unfortunately, there's none, none anywhere close to us. Uh, most of them are east coast and west coast.
Right.
Um, most of them are built in those two spots and, and they ship across the United States. We struggle finding those east coast, west coast companies that want to, want to bid because they don't have anybody in our areas. Um, so being able to provide service for those vehicles, pretty slim. Uh, the one was out of Missouri. I've talked to them. Um, they just, they just felt that at that time, they needed to focus on their, they'd have, they'd had the loss of one of the owners of the company, the owner of the company, and so the daughters taking over. I've had lots of conversations with her. Um, sent her apologies for not bidding, um, but nonetheless, I felt that it was best that, that they do their reorganization, so.
Is there a city policy in place that, I mean, that has to be more than one bid?
No, our policy is that we submit, or we submit to multiple parties unless it is specifically sole source kind of thing, but by reaching out and, and offering a bid to another party, that fulfills it.
We did, we did force them to bid. Right. We did contact a company out of Oklahoma prior to, um, bidding when we did it before. A company called Roll Offs USA, which is where we buy up our containers. Through, generally, they're a little bitter. Um, and they won't sell direct to us. They got to go through a manufact, they got to go through a dealer to do that. Their dealer is the one that didn't, uh, that, that wasn't able to bid, so. And in that case, they wouldn't have bid for them anyway, so.
You've had a previous relationship with Key Equipment?
Yes, sir. Several.
Satisfactory?
Very responsive. Generally, within twenty-four hours, if we have a, a problem, somebody's here to work on it, look at it, help us out with it, so.
Since it's CNG, you just can't take it to any international dealer?
No, we actually can. Um, this is, this will be a Freightliner, um, so it'd be Kansas Truck Center, um, over in Wichita. Um, they, regardless of, they have someone there, they have somebody in Kansas City, and regardless if they have a, a CNG mechanic in their shop, they bring the one down from Kansas City to work on it. Lot, most likely what would happen in that case is instead of going all the way to Wichita, they would stop here. Uh, instead of going all the way to Wichita with it, so, which just makes sense, so. Um, we have a Peterbilt at CNG, or we have a three-twenty, and it goes over to Wichita and serviced over there. So, it's not like we have the, the odd duck that nobody can work on. They, they do, but it, it is different. It is, we do have some different rules that go with that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions, comments? None, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept the bid from Key Equipment in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Second.
We moved to second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Um, social media policy approvals is something we talked about at our work session last Wednesday.
Yes, the...
Any, I'll let you take it from there.
Yes, the, uh, social media policy that is proposed for consideration by the governing body, uh, was prepared by our city attorney. Um, many cities are adopting social media policies because they are utilizing social media as a very useful tool to communicate with the public, uh, but unfortunately, some conversations and comments become uncivil and people post things that are inappropriate, so what our policy attempts to do is define what those, what those, um, items are and then defines parameters for which the city will, uh, remove those from the website for, uh, general purposes. Um, now, because of Kansas Public Meetings Act, we do maintain those on record, so if somebody does request them, we do have access to all of those records, including the ones that are, are, uh, removed from the website. Um, and for the most part, we would only remove those if they are of obscene nature or they have specific, um, made, specific parameters defined in the policy. Uh, but, um, again, we will maintain a copy of those, and again, it's just to facilitate good, proper communication with the public. Um, in the event that we use the, the social media, um, one thing that we do is we get into a lot of discussions where the public can post comments, or they can react to different things, and sometimes, unfortunately, you get reactions that you may, that may not necessarily be appropriate for all audiences, but we do understand that people do have the freedom of speech and the First Amendment is protected, um, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to continue to allow it to be posted on our website, so we do have a mechanism by which we can monitor that and remove that if necessary. And so that's, in essence, the, the main thesis of the, of the policy. The other piece of it is that it, it doesn't necessarily regulate employees and their use of the city's social media from an official standpoint. Obviously, there's oversight with respect to that, um, but it, it doesn't necessarily define, you know, how the city will specifically use it for communicating things like events or different things like that, but as a general rule, department directors, um, have oversight over that function and, um, can, um, utilize a personnel policy if need be, if need be for disciplinary purposes if somebody didn't post something that was appropriate from that side of the, of the coin. So, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I will admit that I reread it again this afternoon, and every time I read something and came up with a question, my mind, a few paragraphs later, you covered it. So, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I think it's all-encompassing and very clear as to who does what and...
Right.
Whatever, so.
And good to have in place, I think, today's social media world. All right, if there's any questions, I would entertain a motion.
So, I will move to approve the social media policy.
Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. All right. Prairie Trails rebranding.
Uh, the city commission asked the Prairie Trails Advisory Board to look at, um, renaming the, uh, Prairie Trails Golf Course, just to kind of make it so that people understood that it was a municipal or public golf course. So, the board reviewed that and discussed it and are recommending changing the name to the El Dorado Public Golf Course, um, and, I'm sorry, the Prairie Trails Public Golf Course. Uh, and at this time, we would not necessarily require a different logo or anything, but we're just changing the name so that people know that it is a public golf course as opposed to a country club, so.
All right. Good. I appreciate the conversation we had about this Wednesday. Any further questions or comments on the name change?
So, it did go back to the board, the, the Prairie Trails Board, or didn't?
It has not.
It has not. The commission discussed it.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the commission can send it back if so desired.
I just double-checked it.
Yep. Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to rename the golf course Prairie Trails Public Golf Course.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved to second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Prairie Trails is now a public golf course. My name too. No longer the club.
And some of us will have to remember that.
Has it been posted there for you?
Okay, next on our agenda would be reports. Um, commission reports or advisory board updates?
Uh, Airport Advisory meets Thursday, uh, and the Youth Commission meets next Monday.
Is Youth Commission still meeting twice a month?
No, once a month.
Okay.
We're going to play with fire.
Just one ear.
On Monday night.
That'd be good.
Um, CTC hasn't met. They, um, they had some issues getting to meet together last month, so they're going to meet tomorrow. And then, uh, Parks and Rec met a couple weeks ago, right, ish? Um, just kind of going over some housekeeping items. Nothing really major to report there. Um, yeah, we're just, some, getting geared up. We really, um, I know we're going to be dropping some members off in a few months, um, and I brought that up, and I think the, the people that were there this last meeting will be a core group for the future of that, that committee.
Good.
Prairie Trails Advisory Board met and they talked about the name change and, um, talked about things they're going to do this year and, uh, they're going to go, they're going to have a, uh, they're going to go back and have the five-day membership again, which they had some requests, quite, quite a few requests apparently for that, so they're going to do that, and, and I wanted to say congratulations to our city attorney, Ashlyn Linscock, who gave birth to a baby boy this past week and, or last week, and they're home now. His name is Lincoln, her and her husband, Arlie. And a week from tomorrow, on thirteenth, Shrove Tuesday, Fat Tuesday, whatever you want to call it, um, the annual Trinity Episcopal Church Pancake and Sausage Feud, uh, four hundred West Ash, um, all the pancakes you can eat and sausage and have juice for the, and punch and stuff, milk and stuff for the kids and coffee. It's free will offering and starts, I think they start cranking them out about four o'clock, so like pancakes and sausage, don't miss it.
Four o'clock in the morning.
In the afternoon.
Thank you.
And what day?
Sixteen hundred.
Thirteen.
How about that?
Thirteen.
There you go, sixteen hundred. Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, El Dorado Inc. met. Uh, they introduced the new board members. Uh, the head of social for the new board and for the board members that were going out, we talked about the status of Inc.'s accomplishments, and David talked about the Alzberger zoning, and that's what we did at the Inc. meeting.
So, what was the discussion about Alzberger zoning?
On the, it be...
Right, but what was the conversation?
It, uh, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, I can. I just provided them an informational update on the rezoning request and the fact that it was not approved by the commission, so they had a general idea of what, what went on, so.
It was taken negatively by the Inc. board?
I bet it was. Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Um, January was kind of busy, uh, for me. Spent some time in Topeka with Municipal Day. We met with Bruce Gibbons and Mary Martha Good, David and I and Matt. Uh, I think the topics that we carried, uh, water fees, uh, and, and the fact that it's the statewide water resource, uh, fees now that impacts us. We think we's, we, uh, we think we have some uniqueness in our, the way, in, in our, in our lake relationship that causes that to be, have some attention. Um, blighted housing, um, and the legislators working, legislature is working on the blighted housing, uh, law. KDOT, kind of expressing our interest in the fact that KDOT stay funded as best it can as we have highways going right through town. And some discussion about the Honor Camp, um, and, and that building out there, that it's, uh, what some of the future is of that, and, and I think, uh, that future is, that the correction facility has no use for that building. Trying to still figure out how, how that can, how that property can be best utilized otherwise, and I think, David, you have had some conversations with the county and, I guess, continue. Anxious to see those conversations continue on what, what can be done with that empty building. Um, REEP, I've had a lot of activity with REEP. REAP, I've had a lot of activity with REAP. Had the Fifth Annual Mayor's Summit, that was in Kechai. And no, the summit was in Bel Air. And the topics at that were the North Junction, they call it the North Junction, but that's the two fifty-four, one thirty-five, two fifty-four, I thirty-five, I two thirty-five, and K ninety-six, it's that juggernaut that's right there by Park City, right? And the fact that it's been designed, but it's not funded to go into construction on how to upgrade and fix and enhance that interchange. Rail service from Oklahoma City to Newton was a topic, passenger rail service. That is gaining momentum. There's currently, if you're interested, a bus that goes from Newton to Oklahoma City. If you want to get off the train at Newton and get on the train again in Oklahoma City, you can take a bus. And the ridership is surprisingly high. I was kind of surprised with the number of riders that were doing that. And continue to, as part of REAP, also continue to promote the airfares at the airport, Wichita Airport. And everything has been done and ongoing to try and keep airfares low. So we also have REAP coming at our next Commission meeting to present and talk about, talk to us about what they're doing. So anxious to see that coming. That's what I've kind of been up to, among other things. Be my report and city manager report. Anything else from the Commission?
I mean, I have Brad, Denver, and Locust. At the, the going towards the east, it's on the south side of that intersection where your drain is, asphalt meets the concrete there. It was looking kind of rough the other day and I...
Or Denver and Cape Springs, maybe?
Maybe Cape Springs.
Okay.
I just, it just didn't, it looked like it got, it's had some wear and tear through the winter.
Freeze, though, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay.
The city received notice the other day that the 2018 CDBG grant application was not funded due to a failure to meet our program threshold requirements. So we won't be receiving funding this time around, but the DOC did offer or invite us to resubmit for future funding application processes. So we'll keep our eyes open for that. The Utilities Department will soon bid out the McCollum Water Tower relining to reduce the corrosion that's taking place on the inside of the tank. We've been monitoring that and Kurt's going to get a better idea of what the corrosion levels are like, but we'll be bidding that soon so that work can commence probably this summer, but maybe even late spring, but this summer at least for that. As the mayor had indicated, we had been to Topeka and because it is legislative season, we are watching the bills that come out of Topeka and particularly those that have a potential to impact our operations and governance structures. House Bill twenty-five oh six, which the mayor mentioned, deals with abandoned housing. We're currently watching that one. The city actually submitted written testimony to the Committee on Local Government concerning that bill, and so we'll continue to monitor that one. But in essence, that process, that bill will streamline the process for dealing with abandoned housing. So the League of Kansas Municipalities, as well as the city, was in support of the proposed legislation, so we'll continue to monitor that and keep you apprised of it. House Bill twenty-five thirteen is a surface water protection fee. That would be placed on public water suppliers, the city, as well as many other public water suppliers throughout the state of Kansas. That fee would be a five cent per thousand gallons. That would be, that the cities or public wholesale, I'm sorry, public water suppliers would be assessed. Those millions would be then sent to the state and the state would put them into their Surface Water Protection Plan Fund. There is a trigger on the bill. The state is required by state law to pay about eight million dollars a year into the Surface Water Protection Fund, which they have not been doing. And in essence, this bill would require cities and public water suppliers to pay the fee unless and only if the state pays the eight million dollars in, would the fee not be collected that year. But the state's track record has not been proven to actually give us confidence that that would actually happen. So we are currently standing opposed to that legislation because we would have to collect it. And one of the difficulties is, once it goes to the state, there's no guarantee that the state won't sweep it for general governmental operations. In addition to that, our lake is a little unique in that the city of El Dorado owns all the water in the lake and the funds would be used for various programs throughout the state, so we wouldn't necessarily get what we put in back. So that's one of the issues that we're also providing as well. So we have submitted written testimony to that effect to the Committee on Environment and Water, so we'll keep you apprised of what's going on with that bill moving forward. In addition, something that's coming up through the House is House Bill twenty-five eighty-five, which concerns motor vehicle sales tax. Presently, when you buy a car, particularly a new car, new vehicle, you pay sales tax at the point of purchase unless the sales tax rate in your home jurisdiction is higher. And then when you go get your tags, you have to pay the difference to your home county, which would include a little bit of money that comes ultimately to the city. There's this bill, House Bill twenty-five eighty-five, would change that so that the sales tax will be remitted to the point of destimation, meaning that if you were to buy a car in Wichita, the city of El Dorado and Butler County would receive that sales tax, should the bill be passed. Still trying to figure out what exactly that would, if that'll be passed, because you could imagine bigger cities have more to lose on that because there's more dealerships in bigger cities. So to be determined, but in the event that it is passed, communities that don't have a dealership or that don't have certain dealerships, like in the case of El Dorado where we don't have a Ford dealership, we would receive some of the benefit of Ford sales that occur from residents in our community outside of our jurisdiction, so.
It seems like Pandora's box.
It is, but you never know. A bill that may interest you all is Senate Bill three twenty-five. As you know, with the local election process being moved to January, the election takes place in November. So if you were elected, as Commissioner Guthrie was the most recent newly-elected commissioner, he was elected in November, didn't get to take the seat until January. What Senate Bill three twenty-five will do is basically make that gap non-existent. It'll go back to the old practice where you will actually take your seat on the first meeting after the results have been certified. So there will be a multi-month overlay where you're waiting. So we'll keep you posted on that one. And then finally, on the legislative front, Senate Bill three forty-two and House Bill twenty-five sixty would create a Cyber Security Act for the state of Kansas, not overly concerning except that it would create an unfunded mandate for local governments, particularly as it relates to our law enforcement agencies. They would be asked to pay a fee equal to seven hundred dollars per employee into the state for the administration of the Cyber Security Act, which right now would be approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars that we would have to pay to the state. Now, that fee could be less, depending on how the bill is obviously approved and then how it's interpreted. But right now, it looks like it would be seven hundred dollars per employee and it's connected to a state agency network to which our law enforcement agencies utilize for their practices. So we'll keep you apprised of that. They've already held a public hearing on that, but obviously that would be twenty-seven thousand dollars that would go to the state and not go to police cars or other things that we need locally. So we'll keep you apprised of that.
Is that annually?
Yes, that would be an annual payment. And then finally, BG Products is expected to commence construction on their new distribution center in the spring, which is prompting the city to plan improvements of Oil Hill Road and Rocky Road. So we will be starting that process here and getting those improvements going so that we can get that road completed as close to their construction schedule or their completion of their project as possible, so that they can be relatively simultaneous. That does a number of things for us, most notably provides direct immediate access to their distribution center, but will also open up the northern part of the industrial area, which will be essential for our future growth opportunities in that area. So we'll keep you apprised of that. Finally, a couple of meetings that are coming up. The Employee Appreciation Breakfast is on Friday. The actual breakfast starts being served at six-thirty, although I believe you can get there early, early in that if you prefer to help with cooking. But if you don't want to cook and you just want to serve, you can come at six-thirty or anytime after that. So that'll be this Friday at the Butler Community Building. And then on Monday, we have the Downtown District Assembly, which is being put on by the, well, by Main Street, Main Street Association, and that will be on February thirteenth at five-thirty at Charlie's Appliances. That's five-thirty PM at Charlie's Appliances.
Tuesday?
On Tuesday, February thirteenth, yes. That's all I got.
Okay. One thing I forgot to mention that the city has as a benefit of being a part of REAP would be access to the Kansas Learning Center and some of the programs that are there for both, for the Commission, for department heads or leadership as identified by David. There are a handful of leadership training or leadership enhancement courses, if you will, at the Leadership Center, which are offered to the city at no cost because of being a member of REAP. There are, I think there's three primarily ones, all different degrees of leadership training, if you have an interest in that, I guess. The fact that it's offered to us through REAP, I think we should probably take advantage of that. I'd like to give David that direction to look into it, see how it fits in our organization. And if any of us have an interest, it's open to us as well. So. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, maybe we can learn more about those even on the next week or next meeting.
Under personal appearances. This was brought up to me. When we have our staff come up here and talk to us, according to personal appearances, they're only allowed to talk for five minutes. Because that's what it states in there. Is there any way we can change that so staff can talk as long as they need to talk and not have it under the five minutes?
Yeah, we can definitely change that. I, for the annual reports, I've limited them to ten minutes just because of trying to keep the meeting as small as possible, short as possible.
I think he just wants to call it something other than personal appearance because...
It causes a conflict when you got people out there that like to talk to the Commission and then they, and then they see this and it says five minutes, they stand up there and talk for ten minutes, but when the people come up there for their personal appearances, they're only allowed five minutes and then they get, they say, well, the city staff gets to talk for as long as they want. It needs to be separated so there's not the conflict in there.
Sure, we can do that.
Would we move that to reports or something else? It's departmental reports or...
Making an agenda.
Yeah, we can just...
Making an agenda and not doing that. I think that would be, would be good. That's a good catch, Greg.
Now, the other, just for clarification, the agenda, and I don't, this might be a minor oversight on my part or somebody's part, but the personal appearances is limited to five minutes and public comments is limited to three. I don't know if we want to align that or if there's any, I don't know if there's a rhyme or reason to that, other than we probably copied and pasted from somewhere and didn't see that until now. So I don't know if we want to change that or how we want to deal with that or if it matters. Personal appearances are generally people that call in advance and have a specific thing that they'd like to bring up, personal comments or public comments. While they are generally specific in nature, you may have a room full of people and then if you make them too long, then your meeting's going to be a little...
I'm okay with the limit, with the time. We can always adjust that depending on the top issue at hand.
I think you just didn't want to call the department reports personal appearances.
Right, no, that makes sense.
Okay. All right, anything else to bring, Brock, before the Commission?
I've had a few phone calls about the honor camp. Can you let everybody kind of know what's going on out there?
Sure.
You've told us, but there's quite a few people who like to know out there.
Sure, absolutely. So late last year, December, there was a legislative post audit completed at the request that represented Mary Martha Good, looking at the honor camp here in El Dorado as well as the one in Toronto. The legislative post audit determined that there are kind of two options with respect to use of the property. And just for some background information for those that may be watching at home. The property is owned by United States Army Corps of Engineers, who leases it to the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism, who subleases it to the Kansas Department of Corrections. The honor camps have been vacant since two thousand nine, if I remember correctly. At any rate, the state has determined that there's kind of two options. One would be to renovate or revitalize, rehabilitate, I guess is the best word, rehabilitate the structures and reuse them as something for the correctional departments. It may not be an honor camp specifically, but some type of facility, although they did not go into the details of what that cost would look like. That would require additional study in order to get that number. They also studied the option of what it would take to demolish the structures. In total, the two facilities would cost four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to demolish. The state has not identified a funding source at this time to do that, so they sit vacant. There is some concern that the Army Corps of Engineers will ask the state to do something with it because it has sat vacant for so long, but that hasn't come down the pike at this point. Now, also included in the post-legislative audit was a statement that suggested that Butler County had requested the land for use as a fairgrounds, although it also said that the federal government had tentatively denied that request, but it did not extrapolate why or what the rationale for that was. So presently, the county is interested in exploring options to get the structures demolished. The state has not indicated that they have any interest in rehabilitating the structures for continued use. And so I think the interest is to clear the property and then figure out a way that it can be used for recreational purposes, which is something the Corps would be open to doing. But again, we don't know why they tentatively denied the request for a fairgrounds, but they would be open to potentially using it for recreational opportunities. So that's kind of where that stands now. Will Johnson and I are going to be meeting at some point in the near future to kind of talk about what that might look like and what our interest levels might be to partner on that and specifically as it relates to working with the state and potentially even the Army Corps of Engineers on a deal that might make that work, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking, I think that's, that's good. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.